Tax rate hearing. We'll do a call of made in the board and do a roll call vote. Vina, present for, we're doing a roll call vote for the tax rate.
Present.
Do you stand up?
I have to do a roll call. You're present.
I'm present.
Uh, Kenny.
Present.
I'm Mark.
Present.
Present.
Mark.
Present.
Mark.
Proposed tax rate for the 2018-19 school year. We had a Suss valuation in 2017 of $104,583,379. And that's residential, commercial, agriculture, and personal property tax. And for 2018, the total property tax value is $109,395,103. The largest increase was in personal property. It increased by $4,476,331. So we saw a significant increase in personal property. That amount of property tax revenue that we have budgeted is $3,8365. We are at the minimum levy of $2.75 that you can have in the state. So we did see an increase, but since we are at the minimum levy, we do not have to do a rollback. Because you can only see a certain amount of increase each year. But since we are at that minimum levy, we stay at $2.75. Questions about that that I can answer. So we will see, we will see an increase. It's about, it's about a 3-4% increase this year. We saw a fairly decent increase last year because it was a reassessment here. Questions, comments? We have a public comment.
I need a motion to approve the tax rate of $2.75. Michael makes a motion at a second. Kenny seconds, there's another discussion. All those in favor? Here is six oh. This time we'll adjourn the tax rate meeting. We go into open session, get ready for that 6:30. Next, we'll approve the consent agenda. And with consent agenda, the motion I'll need is to approve the items that are included in the agenda. The general fund balance statement, minutes of the June 21 regular meeting, updated substitution, teacher list, payment of monthly bills with the exception of the MSBA policy maintenance payment because of the separate action that we'll do later in the agenda. Does anyone want to make the motion? Mark makes the motion at a second. Any seconds or, Michael seconds?
Bills are obviously high this month because we're starting school. It was about $509,000, but $300,000 of that is our first purchase payment. And then $30,000 for the bagel purchases as well. That's why those are so high. They're high every month.
Any other discussion? Here and then, all those in favor? The five four, those against, and abstentions, Mr. Flue. Next, we'll go into the MSBA monthly order report.
Can you hear the sound? No, we're gonna skip that.
Okay.
We don't have sound.
Not this month, so we will go into the board.
Fall conference, just a reminder, September 27th through 30th. We have reservations for you. If you are not going to stay on Saturday night, and we need to know that quickly, so Mrs. Sherrill can cancel that rule. But we have reservations, hotel reservations for people already who say they're not gonna stay on Saturday night, or you're not able to go.
Any other board spotlights?
Mr. Bell. New faculty.
Alright. Could all of our new faculty members please stand?
Sure. Sure, I'll go first. We have Emily Petty from sixth grade English Language Arts. She's also doing high school volleyball. We have Ashley DeBoer, she is doing seventh grade math. And then we have Renee Stillings, who is doing sixth grade math. So we're excited to have them.
We have Mrs. Hamby, Mrs. Rachel Hamby, who's teaching English. We have Mr. Kelly, who is our learning lab supervisor for dual credit and is also going to be helping with Spanish classes. We have Mrs. Carnell, who is our special education teacher. And Mrs. Miles, who is our counselor secretary, which is not here today. We also wanted to recognize our new school resource officer, Officer Brandon Reed. I don't think he's here tonight. Anyway, we appreciated his help today, and it was just great to have that presence in the building.
Hi, derek nice Stephanie Hall, she's our usual day preschool teacher, of course, honey Eve, and still smiles.
Had a very good meeting this, uh, we had them come in this year, two days before school got started, this is, we've got so much information now. Came in, did a lot of work, took in a lot of information, and hopefully enough to get started, and I'm sure they'll be, we'll bring them up here.
Sure. Very affectionate.
Sorry guys, can you get over there and take another picture? Yep, standing here in front of the bed. This was the favorite part of all of me. One, two, three. Thank you.
You guys can go. Going more than welcome. Put in a hard day today. The other thing I'd just briefly like to talk about is, we had a couple different things happening last week. We had school supply project, took place Friday night. And Lacy Wallace really heads that supply project up, I think nine or 10 years now. And it was over at MOC for kids that need school supplies. She works with the community members, she works with Walmart, and the school district is part of that. But really, it's a great effort by her and her group of people that gather school supplies, buy school supplies. So no kid kind of walks in the building without everything they need to get the school year started. So I just want to publicly thank her again. And then MOC who had our health fair, it's that last Saturday, two Saturdays ago, the fourth, obviously, for the supply project, the school supply project was the third. But MOC did a five and 10K that morning. They partnered with different organizations, our cross-country team worked that. Then they had the health fair. I think they did like 46 haircuts. They had 14, 40, 40-plus sports physicals, got kids out on immunization. So just thank you to the MOC and the work that they do helping our kids be ready for school as well.
Next, we'll move into the principal and directory reports. And we start with Bell, your principal, Dr. Rau.
Obviously today was the first day back at school. We were excited to have kids on campus. A lot of smiling faces, we had a couple different assemblies today to get things going.
The school principal, Mrs. Swart.
We also had a great day back. We had four different assemblies, coached all your I-9 at each grade level. And want to thank our teachers, they do a great job of welcoming our kids in. Fifth grade's a big transition for our kiddos, they have lockers, and just want to thank them for that extra help.
High school principal, Dr. Nash.
We also had a great day back, didn't we Cameron? We had a back-to-school assembly today. We talked about what's new at Ava High School, handbook changes and some reminders. Student council presented the bear code to our student body, and so we wanted to thank them for that. But it was a great day, we were glad to have our kids back in the hallways.
Thank you. Special service director, Mrs. Swart.
Hi, of course we had a great day too. It was very busy, and our teachers are very busy. We're processing new students that have moved in. We had 14 move in, five in the elementary, five in the middle school, and four in the high school in the last two weeks. So we're busy going through all of that paperwork and tracking down records. And the teachers have done a great job accepting those new students into their classes.
Thank you. Next, move into executive reports, Dr. Dahl.
So enrollment, I've talked to you over the last 12 months, enrollment's been on the upswing, and it's still on the upswing. So in 2000, so same date the last three years. In 2016, we had pre-K through 12, we had 1,276 students. 2017, so a year ago at this time, pre-K through 12, we had 1,311 students. And today, we have 1,385 students. So up 74 kids. Now that shifts and, that goes back and forth, really settles in after Labor Day, but that's a great thing. So that means you'll hear me talk again all year about projected enrollment, projecting enrollment for school funding. Because we will try to take advantage of those kids that are here now versus using last year's attendance. So just be aware of that. Funding for the year at this point, July funded at six, our state adequacy target at 6249, where we ended the year last year. I expect that same SAT to go through probably October, and then we'll start seeing a bump up. State really needs to get in their summer school numbers. Our summer school was up as well, so we'll be able to take some advantage of that. So really financially, we're in good shape at this point. I'll have some more specifics as we get a little bit farther into the year, where we are and how we're tracking versus budget. Dr. Nash mentioned, but you know, we had, we're working on an agreement with the city to try to have an SRO. Really couldn't find a quality candidate at this time, so I worked with, not a quality candidate, because we did have qual, we did have quality, that's the wrong word, somebody that we felt was the right fit for our, for our district. So worked with Sheriff DeGase and Presiding Commissioner Lance Stillings, and we are renting an officer right now. So we're renting Brandon Reed from the county. We're excited to have Brandon on, on campus. He came the other, a couple days ago, he and I talked, we don't, working on a spot for him to land, but he's got a radio, he's got a set of keys. He was all over campus today, in all three buildings. Spent time at recess, spent time in lunchrooms, spent time in classrooms, so we're excited to have Brandon. He'll be a great addition. But my recommendation would be at this point for us to try to hire one as a district. Try to hire our own as a district. So we really couldn't find one through the city, we may have to do something with the pay scale, so I would like to post that position immediately. Let's see what we can find. Brandon, I think, is interested in that position, you know, but again, I'll have some discussion about that, but we'll see what other applicants we get at that time, so. We're gonna need a motion for that, and just need to have him post the position. Anyway, that is about all I have. We had a great first day of school, got everybody to school safely, got everybody home safely, had to make some transitions and some drop-offs in the middle. I know Mr. Turner, got some wrong kids on the bus, but it wasn't his fault, he was driving a different bus, but brought him up, met the parent, parents were okay too. We've got that figured out. But it's been interesting, phone calls always come in, the last two days, oh, my kid used to ride the bus. So then we're trying to scramble around, figure out which bus to ride. But we got them all here today, got them all home safe, so it was a good day. Thank you.
Mr. Dahl.
I'm really just gonna follow up on a couple different things that kind of been mentioned. Something we need to differentiate with our new teachers, we've always in the past decided one day, where we just brought new teachers in. As we've talked about last school year, to see what there are more and more mandates, things you have to do. Sometimes it's just so overwhelming and just informational. So we, we've brought them in for two days this year. You know, one, tell them things that we have to, and then tell them things that we want to, and things they need to know, you know, to help our kids be successful. So I'm looking forward, we always follow up with our new teachers throughout the year, and have, have regular meetings, just get their feedback, and hopefully we can do, make that program better, in program talking, new teacher induction, just what that process looks like, and try to make that as good as we can for those folks. The other thing, we talked about community health fair a little bit. We've had lots of groups throughout the community, doing lots of different activities, and this was just another one that was, it was a tremendous event. Schools allowed to have a booth that day also, to share some resources, to share, really, just to share resources with maybe some folks that we otherwise might not get to, get to visit with. You know, just with the different things going on that day, we just have a lot of people in attendance. And we try to host events at school lots of times, and it's just hard. School gets going, and practices, music competitions, you know, just all the different things that the folks do, it's, it's hard to get people in, get that information in their hands, and have conversations. And that was just a unique opportunity, to have an opportunity to share information, have a conversation with these folks that we otherwise wouldn't be able to. So we were, we were thrilled to participate in that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next, we will get into our discussion and action items on the agenda. We'll start with some public comments.
A couple of parents have requested to address the board. Mrs. Merritt, I think you're first on the list. I'll just remind you, and we've talked before, you can't talk about specific personnel or specific students that are in your job.
Right. I'm just here to read a letter that my daughter wrote, and she didn't refrain from using any, any names. I decided to write this letter because I don't think that some understand how much the bullying has affected me and my family. It's affected me really bad because I thought these individuals were my true friends, but they changed my life forever, and I'll always be scared to make new friends because they might turn on me just the way these others did. They made me feel worthless, like I was nothing, like I was a burden. They made me not want to be here. Sorry on this earth anymore because I felt my life was over because I didn't have friends. When my life has just begun, I have already learned what feeling bad and worthless feels like. I'm 12 years old, and I'm already getting hurt by people I loved and cared for, the ones that promised to be here with me through everything. And that's all changed. Once that changed, my attitude changed. I had a different emotion every hour. When I was home the last 30 weeks of school, my world was turned upside down, while their lives continued like nothing happened. I was upset one minute, and the next minute I was all down and feeling all bad about myself, and wondering what I could do to change their mind, or wondering what I did to them is we treated the way I was being treated. But deep down, I knew everything I did wrong. What I did wrong was I let them control me for far too long. And when I didn't anymore, they wouldn't be my friends. And then a while later, they begin to be apologizing over and over, and I forgave them all of those times. I forgave them because I just wanted them to be happy. I just want friends. Turns out forgiving them all those times was wrong. I did wrong by believing they would change and be there for me, but why would they change when they were getting away with what they were doing? They were the ones that tore me down, they were the ones that made me cry in class, or being my living room floor baby for this all, just that. For things to just change back. I soon realized that I wanted to make a change because they not only hurt me, but they really hurt my family as well. My mom had to quit her job because she was scared something bad would happen to me. We've had to change schools, we've had all, we've all had to make sacrifices. And all we can do now is pray for the school and students, and pray that when it happens to another student, that they won't be hurt and they will feel safe.
My name is Dawn Cox. I, my son and my family, we're here, we've been here for about a year. We moved, my son is Michael Cox, who attended Ava High School this past year as a sophomore. At the time, we had just recently moved to Douglas County a couple months before school started. We knew we would be presented with challenges, but not to the degree that we did. My son is moderate severe ADHD with autistic tendencies, as well as multiple diagnoses of social anxiety and depression. I am mentioning this to ensure that everyone knows that I hold no illusions when it comes to my son. I know him, and I know what a challenge he can be. Moving here for my job was not easy for him. That said, he went into Ava High School, started the year with a modicum of confidence. He had extreme fear. Fear that eventually kept him up at night and made him physically sick. In the second half of the school year, that anxiety became more pronounced. His self-confidence and self-worth took a major hit. He wasn't sleeping, and he ended up coming to us over several incidents that had happened at school. When we asked why he had come to us sooner, or to administration of these events, he replied that he had been scared to. Scared that recorded events would make him a bigger social pride than he already was. Simply also, he wouldn't be believed because the boys who were bullying him were popular as well as Michael being a teacher's son. There were a few boys that were relentless in his treatment of Michael, three in particular. The words I'm about to use are not easy to hear. Michael was told by them that he looked like Pennywise from the movie Ed with cum in his hair publicly in front of others. He was called bitch, fat bitch, faggot, and sloth numerous times in the hallway, lunch area, and numerous other public places. When another student attempted to hurt himself at school, Michael overheard the three of them joking about this student's weight, and how he wouldn't have hurt himself, he would have hurt the ground. Michael muttered under his breath about them, and one of the boys flat-out asked Michael if he was having sex with this boy, and oral sex, in front of everybody in the middle class. That same behavior was then directed towards the other student as well as accusing him of being autistic. Obviously, this is and was bullying behavior. Michael stated he was too scared to go to anyone at school about it for, as I said before, three reasons. One of the children being one of his teacher's kids, being new to school, and being more ostracized than he already was, and the fear of just not being believed. I know my son is not easy. He's weird, he's rigid, and has a tough time connecting with peers of his age. I hold no illusions as to who he is and how difficult he can be. None of that matters when it comes to this behavior. Hope that goes without saying. As a mother and a social worker, who's been a social worker since she was 18 years old for both the state of Illinois and Missouri, I feel as though I have no choice but to pull Michael from public school, and homeschool him at least for this junior year. He is, in his words, quite literally scared to go back to Ava High, and I have to acknowledge that. The very thought of my son not feeling safe, as well as adding in the recent events in the teenage suicide rate, especially those with certain mental health diagnoses, is not something I'm willing to mess around with. According to the CDC, suicide is the second leading cause of death among individuals aged 15 to 24. For every suicide among teenagers, there are at least 100 attempts. That's a high number. Over 14% of high school students have considered suicide, and almost 7% have attempted it. That's a scary number. A Yale University study released that bully victims are between two to nine times more likely to consider suicide than non-victims, which suggests that it is not completely correlated to previously diagnosed mental health illnesses. My son will miss that first taste of being an upperclassman. He will miss seeing a girl in the hallway and wonder and worry that he should ask for a homecoming or prom. He will not get to experience everything that each of us experienced in his junior year. There's no do-over, there's no makeup. He's gonna miss that. I have another son who will be entering Ava High School this fall as a freshman. I hope, pray, and trust daily that he will not encounter these similar events, and that he is able to cultivate relationships with peers to help protect and empower each other. I have one more thing I want to add that I did not write down. The high school administration, specifically Dr. Nash, responded to this email immediately when I sent it. I want to make sure that the board understands that and knows that. Responded immediately. And instead of homeschooling my child privately, we talked, and he will be attending alternative but web-based at home. So that is something. But I want to make sure that everybody understands, whereas I think honestly, the policy that we have here is crud. A forum doesn't empower these kids to do anything. Your administration, specifically Dr. Nash, followed up immediately. And I emailed this to four people, and she was the only one who did follow up. And that restored just a little bit of faith that I had in Ava High. I'm not gonna lie about that. So I urge you as board to look at policies and procedures and trainings, and realize that this is real, and it's not just my kid. I'm a social worker, I'm a trained social worker, and have been since I was 18 years old, and this happened to my kid. And I guess if anything, I have the training so that it should have. I should have helped empower him, but it still did. So I urge all of you to take this seriously, and look for other means to help empower our children. Teach them to lead with kindness. Teach them that life isn't about them, it's about serving and helping each other. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate both of your comments, and it is an ongoing discussion. This topic, and it's just a continuing, and it's an ongoing discussion with our administration and our teachers. And we hope we see some improvement. Do you see some improvement in that over the next 12 months? Does it, I, I hope you know that it's not following our def欠.
I'd like to worry it was, I'll be honest, I was worried it was. Nash absolutely alleviated those worries.
I'd like to make a comment. Ladies, it took a lot for you to come here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will do the annual secretary of the board report.
You have a copy of that in front of you. That is a yearly report that, that really Mrs. Ray is in charge of submitting. Really gives us our unrestricted fund balance, talks about our expenditures and revenues. You will see that our unrestricted fund balance ended 2017-18 at 22.5. That is up over the last two years. 16-17 was 20.02. 2015-16 was 19.69. Previous boards and this board, really, we're focused on 20 to 25%. It's where we feel like we need to be, so we're right there in the middle of 22.5. So it has been submitted to DESI and accepted. I just need the approval of the ASBR from you all.
The motion and the vote needed for the approval of the ASBR. Can you make some motion at a second? Mark seconds, any discussion? All those in favor? Carrie six oh. Next, tuition rate.
Annual, we set tuition rate on an annual basis in August for K-8 feeder schools, as well as anybody else that would like to send their child to Ava. And we have had some people that haven't lived in our district that have sent their children here. So really take all of our expenses, we divide it by the number of students that we have enrolled, and we come up with this number. The tuition rate for FY19, my recommendation is $6,817.03 as compared to $6,895 in FY18. So our tuition rate is dropping, which is a unique thing, and that doesn't happen very often. But we've used the same formula for 20-plus years, so I feel like we need to stay with that formula.
Okay, so we'll need a motion and vote to set the tuition rates for six, that's $6,817.03. George makes a motion at a second. Michael seconds, any discussion? All those in favor? Carrie is a six oh. Here is a six oh. Next, the transportation.
Transportation rate, this is kind of a unique rate, we, we have not charged this to schools at this point, but for the two thousand eighteen, nineteen transportation charges would be one thousand seven dollars and sixty-one cents as compared to the seventeen, eighteen transportation charges would, would have, were twelve thou, one thousand two hundred and twenty-three dollars and thirty-six cents, so they've kind of followed the tuition rate and dropped.
Okay, so we need a vote to set the transportation rate for the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year, one thousand seven dollars and sixty-one cents. Troy makes a motion, Michael seconds, any discussion? All those in favor? Here is a six oh. Next, conflict of interest ordinance policies.
This is a BBFA, it's a, we're required by the Ethics Commission to adopt this ordinance every year, or this board policy every year, it's just dealing with financial interests, we have to do it by September fifteenth, it's just that you are not financially benefiting from being on the Board of Education, really is what it is, and you have to do a financial disclosure anyway, so we just have to adopt that by September fifteenth and send that to you.
Okay. So any motion and vote needed to con, to accept the conflict of interest ordinance policy, BBFA. Mark makes a motion, Michael seconds, all those in favor? Here is a six oh. Next, with MSBA, full maintenance policy service.
Another thing that we, we adopt every year, we use MSBA to be sure that we're reading all state proper guidelines, they are, they, there is room in some of our policies for the Board of Education Administration to make recommendations for changes, many of those are critical based on state law and MSBA ensures that we have policies that are following state law, so the cost of that for a yearly fee of three thousand four hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
So we'll take a vote on MSBA full maintenance policy service, any motion? Michael makes a motion, I have a second, any seconds, any discussion? All those in favor? Here is a six oh. To approve the substitute bus driver.
Substitute regular bus drivers, we have some, we've had some drivers that have found some, some contractors that have found some drivers, we have all of our buses covered, but these are extra people, so and all of them have to pass their, they have a CBO with a bus permit and they have to pass a physical and they have to pass a drug screen and put a background check. So all of these individuals, before they can drive a bus, have to have, have to have all of those, with Butch Cisco, Bill Diet, Matthew, I'm not a bunch of that name, Laleko, William Watson and Christopher Tomlinson. Some of them will be driving the activities, trips for the district as well.
So I need to approve a substitute bus driver, as Dr. Dahl has mentioned, I have a motion, Troy makes a motion, Michael seconds, any discussion? All those in favor? Here is a six oh. Surplus property.
So we have a number of items here for surplus property that I've sent to you, we have, that we will be advertising in the paper, taking sealed bids on, we usually put that in the paper for a couple of weeks and then we take high bid, we do put some minimum bids on some, some items, but I've provided you with that list, I can go through it if you want me to, but it's, you know, so, some things need a lot of repair, like the link, like the Lincoln welders for ag that we replaced, some of the grinders and sanders need, need some repair, but people are interested in that and like to fix those types of things. We do have a small Deutz garden tractor, but really the bigger items are Black Suburban that we've replaced, we have an older Ford Tors that has a hundred and twenty thousand miles on it that we don't use, was the driver's ed car, and then we're still going, we're going to relist, we really aren't even voting for it, plus ninety-five thirty-eight, we have some interest in that as well.
So we need approval of surplus property for us. Can you make some motion, Mark seconds, any discussion? All those in favor? Here is a six oh. Emergency management plan.
Mr. Howe, Mr. Howe is the Chair of our Emergency Management Committee, he's really pulled this together, as you, as you see here, he's done quite a bit of work in this area with teachers in every building, law enforcement in the area, he, that group is responsible, is responsible for the door locks on every classroom door, so we have some new, some locking mechanisms that we feel are much quicker, we've got those at a very good rate, so if you want to give a brief overview, we've uploaded the plan to them, but.
Okay. Well, back last school year during the first semester, we formed a committee that has twenty committee members and represents administrators, teachers, secretaries, other staff workers from each building, also represents law enforcement, public school board members on it as well and then parents as well. Formed that committee, met during the second semester and presented them with this plan, took their input and, and really kind of tweaked it and came up with a bid plan that gives us some procedures to follow, detailed procedures really to follow in case of any type of emergency, which we didn't have, haven't had in place in the past, so it feels like it keeps our students, our staff workers more safe and, and more prepared. We also added a, and updated the crisis flip charts, all of the classrooms have new building maps with primary and secondary evacuation routes, short summary of what to do in a fire, earthquake or tornado, and then we installed these new C-locks that are quick to install in case something happens, we go into lockdown, makes sure everyone's more secure and so, I guess I can take that off. More secure and, and more safe and we're just pretty happy with it and confident that it better prepares our district to keep our students and staff safe.
I don't think our emergency plan has been updated since I've been here before, so it was a wider undertaking, Mr. Howe.
Katie Chapman, when I put this in her classroom, she says I was in the third grade and helped my mom fold these things, and she's a teacher in the elementary now, so, yeah.
So that's something we will look at every year now.
Yeah.
If we make any tweaks, we have a committee, it outlines to do with the SRO, because we're going to put that in there thinking we would have it in place.
Yeah.
Mr. Johnson, I think you were on that committee, am I correct? Do you have anything to add to that?
No, I'm very proud of Mr. Cox, he has been very diligent and opens all contestants, I think he's come up with a very good plan.
That's, we've uploaded that for you for your review.
So we did motion and vote for the emergency management plan, that was, I think we'll get. Make that motion. Next motion, Michael seconds, any discussion? All those in favor? Here is a six oh. MSBA policy updates.
So those, these are, remember, we're not adopting anything tonight, these are, have been uploaded for your review, I will give you a very detailed breakout of each one of those policies next week, any changes, some of those are critical, so it's a change of state law, and those have been sent to the admin team for their review as well, and any groups that, that it would affect, we'll get the feedback from them, we'll have recommendations for you at next meeting.
All right, next, that concludes our agenda items on our board meeting this month, the next regular board meeting will be September twentieth at six-thirty in this boardroom. Have a motion to adjourn. Ken, make some motion, I have a second, all those in favor? Here is a six oh.
Thank you.